The official timepiece.
That's the official timepiece?
It is time. Are we on? We are? Okay.
It says we are.
So we need to wash ourselves. We've got about thirty seconds here. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission, May ninth, twenty twenty-two. Can we get a roll call done?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley? Let the record show she is absent tonight. Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Beatty?
Here.
Commissioner Dawson?
Here.
You have corn, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. Now, the first agenda item is the adoption of the meeting minutes from April the eleventh. I've been apprised that they are not ready to be adopted.
Unfortunately, that is correct.
Okay.
You have an animal ordinance instead of minutes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, moving along. Item number three is old business. Application for subdivision variance. H. Bruce Green Family Partnership, south of John B. Gordon Road, parcel zero six three zero zero one and zero zero three, zero six two, zero two zero. Five lots, twenty-six, thirty-seven acres, access private road, final plat. Is there some folks signed up for?
This is not a public hearing. You already know they're a public hearing, so this is final consideration. We have the applicants here if you'd like to talk to them. I have a presentation where I can review what we've done, what they did, based on my initial review with preliminary plat, whatever you like, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, well, let's do that first, and then that might listen to discussion.
Absolutely. Again, I did an initial review of the preliminary plat. This is the best map that I could come up with with my ability. So you can tell that this is an isolated plat. You have John B. Gordon and Cersei Road to the north and Martin Church to the east. And that's why a lot of this was that easement that had to be obtained, which you received a copy of that at your last meeting. All right, this is just going through the staff report. There were not a lot of points. The first point, and these are the points that are in italics, the fact that a major part of your review as the planning commission was the fact that they were requesting waivers to a number of things, specifically road design and access. And there was discussion of preliminary plats. There was an item that was not on the legend, so we asked that that be on the legend of symbols.
What item was that?
Well, that was nothing you had to vote on. That was just something that administratively the surveyor made that change.
Okay.
Then this is another change where the significant landmarks, in this case those roads, were added onto the plat. The floodplain was not initially on there, so we asked them to add the floodplain. Looking at this final plat, that still, it's on there now. Oops, go back to point five. I would have liked some notes on the first page explaining the NRCS. It's indicated on the maps. There's not really an explanation that the person looking at this can understand what it is. They'll have to go to another source, but there's no paragraph of explanation there for that easement. I suppose if you want to ask the applicants more detailed information about it.
What is an NRCS?
They can help you with that. It's a federal agency. The first waiver that was approved was basically the legal access. The ordinance requires there be legal access, the inhabit, and that's the lengthy process of getting that easement agreement with the two property owners to the north. They obtained that, so they met that waiver. But again, it wasn't direct access, so the waiver was to accept the easement that they obtained. And you did approve that. The second waiver was that you agreed that they were not going to finish the road, that it was going to be a private road that would basically be laid out on the plat for that mandatory sixty-foot right-of-way, but none of the improvements that would normally be required in subdivision had to go forward. You approved that waiver. First approval was probably the easiest thing is the name of the road, as long as it doesn't repeat something we already have in the county. You obviously approve, always approve those names, and that's what you did in that particular case. You approved the name of Pole Barn Road. Next one is the waiver three. Again, they didn't want to improve the road. One of the requirements is there be cul-de-sacs on the end of any dead-end road. You waived that requirement, so there are no cul-de-sacs. They were granted waiver three. And then final approval was the road as a private road. And that concludes the staff report. Mr. Chairman, again, I did quickly look at this final plat, and all those requirements were met, as well as your waivers certainly accommodated and your approvals. So certainly, staff recommends approving the final plat.
Okay. Is there any discussion among the commissioners?
No.
I don't think there is, actually.
All right, I will entertain the motion.
Make a motion to accept the plat as it is?
No, second.
This is the final plat?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Right, please.
Thank you so much.
I can sign this one at the end of the meeting if you want to wait. I noticed you had the other suit.
Yeah, I don't know. I gotta be a little kid.
All right. See you tomorrow.
All right, moving along to new business. We have a draft animal ordinance.
Now, before that, you got something.
Well, we did. Well, we got a guest speaker. I'm getting to that.
Oh.
Okay. So everybody find this. But before that, we do have a guest speaker, Adrian Relliford, who is the Upson County Animal Control Director. And he has a presentation and some discussion amongst the commissioners. As we once again open up this Pandora's Box of animal control. After, what'd you say, four years?
It's been three minutes.
Three and a half.
It's been sitting around for a minute, gathering something.
Well, thank you goodness we had it on tape, and I got to listen to it all over again.
Wonderful.
It has some stuff that needs to be tweaked, other than changed altogether.
Okay.
The paper that they gave you is showing you the numbers over the last four years of how the numbers going down, but if you look at them, they still very high for a county the size of Upson. Intake on twenty eighteen was nine hundred and fifty-six. Now, before that, to start back to sixteen, we took in fourteen hundred and seventy-seven animals. And you think about it, in a year with holidays and stuff, that's way over.
That's three or four a day, right?
Yeah, per day. We get a lot of animals in, but it don't got down as the last year. We were at, twenty twenty-one, we took in eight hundred and eighty-seven. That's still real high for this county. So it went down from twenty sixteen being fourteen seventy-seven all the way to eight something for intake, but the utilization numbers are still high. On your sheet, you got adoption, rescue, utilization, and the last one is return to owner. So you can see the discrepancy of how many people come and get these dogs out of. Out of last year, seven hundred and thirty-seven picked up, only a hundred and thirty were returned to the rightful owner. The majority of our dogs are going to rescue or euthanize. That's the highest two areas we got. So with that, we know we got mandatory rabies and all that. You're supposed to have it in the state of Georgia, but in order to enforce that, you need to have some type of registration with the dog. Now, it might take a while to get to that point to where we can have people register that dog because of how, how back in time, everybody looks at having a dog like being a alarm out in your yard. Nobody is taking dog ownership serious in the county. You got a few, but for the most part, everybody thinks they just poke their chain dog up and have them in the yard to bark, you know, when somebody pull up.
So in terms of the registration, what's the difference between that and you take your dog to the veterinarian, the tag, tag's got a little number on it?
See, that's responsibility. We can make you responsible for that dog if you got a tag on it, but most people like them to get these, y'all can look through these right now. While y'all are passing them around, while y'all are. See, once somebody get attacked, bit, chased, anything by a dog, you can't, I can't make that dog be yours. If you say it's not your dog, I can't make it be your dog. Well, you got a dog house in your yard? You can tell me the dog showed up, so it's no ownership without having that tag, vet one to the vet. You can easily, you know, write that dog out, he showed up one weekend, somebody put him out. That's the going thing for any dog that does any of that stuff you see in that folder.
So you're advocating some type of registration program?
It doesn't have to be initially registered, but if your dog has to come through the animal shelter, if it leaves back out, it should have some type of registration tag to it. So if it's another incident, we know who to charge.
I see.
Because right now, you know, we get the same, we get a lot of the same dog over and over.
Okay.
And they might come give them, they might not. It's not required for you to pick your dog back up, but if you do pick it up, there's a fine associated with the dog. And a lot of folks, they'll either not pick it up, or they send somebody else, didn't send a different name. So when we see it the next time, well, I gave that dog to my brother, or somebody else adopted it here locally, and it got into the same predicament, and now it's starting the whole cycle over with a different family.
Right.
So the accountability part is the biggest thing that could clear up some of this other stuff down the line with nuisance and everything else. Because that's the main issue. Nuisance dog, which everything that fall under nuisance, basically like chasing, attacking other animals, attacking livestock, attacking, chasing people walking, pooping in the yard, tearing up private destruction. That's all your calls, that's the majority of your calls on a daily basis. So anything to put the ownership of that dog on somebody, so when something happens, we know who to go after. You can't just go by, neighbor said, well, the dog been over there all their life, and they can't, if they don't have any vet records or anything, never got a rabies shot, you can't pin the dog on it. So when you go to court, it's just like, it's just a stray.
So these photographs I'm looking at, they look pretty egregious, some of these children being bitten in the face.
Yeah, that's every, every other day around here.
How, how many of these cases get resolved?
Oh, they don't.
They don't?
Usually don't get resolved because the majority of people that own dogs, they do that rent, and they won't have any insurance, and you won't, and the same thing applies with them.
I'm talking about in terms of ownership or responsibility.
Or they ever, yeah, or they ever. The county actually had to pay for one of those dogs biting somebody because we euthanized the dog, and the people didn't take ownership for it. So it was our property, and we euthanized it apparently prematurely for their liking. And the county ended up having to pay one of them medical bills. But all of that is based off of dogs that run loose, bite people, especially right now, we're getting into that, that paradigm of the year where all the dogs are in heat, everybody running, ripping, running, all the dogs trying to mate, so they biting every weekend during the heat, during the hot month. And like I said, we don't have, that's the initial thing, we don't have any ownership for any of those dogs that bite you.
Going back to your initial statement, you said you had some recommendation changes to the ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
As it's written?
Yeah, for the, like with those, any of that stuff that happened, you can't deem that dog dangerous to euthanize it on the spot because it didn't have any, no incidents beforehand. But if you look at the pictures, any of that stuff you see in there bad enough to know that the dog is vicious.
A dog that do that is dangerous.
Yeah, but the dog has to already have been deemed vicious prior to this happening.
By stock dog or the current ordinance or?
Yeah, it had to be deemed, it had to already have a call on it to where somebody deemed it vicious, but the majority of what you see is stuff that's.
According to what?
In here where it says dangerous dog, let me show you.
Oh, okay, according to this draft ordinance?
Yeah, the dog would have to already be deemed dangerous prior. See, now, we can deem those dogs dangerous after they do that at that point, but they're still in a, in a position where the owner could get them back. You could get them back after they admit their first offense if they hadn't already been deemed dangerous before that happened.
So what you're recommending is the dog to be deemed dangerous immediately?
And we don't need dangerous and vicious, like it should be either one or the other. One ought to be a bad enough, good enough, dangerous ought to be good enough to just deem it, is either dangerous or it's vicious, because all of that, even the basic bite is dangerous enough to where you don't want that dog back on the road. You shouldn't have two classifications for a dog, because normally if they get somebody, they give them. It's no in-between. Biting fingers and stuff, like I would say that's vicious enough.
Yeah.
If it's unprovoked. Now, some, one of those fingers that somebody's trying to break up to a dog, so that really, the dogs are doing what they need to do with each other during mating season, and he tried to take him apart, and he got his finger bit off of it. It shouldn't be two classifications of dogs with stuff, when you're doing stuff like that. It ought to either be dangerous or vicious, one or the other, because that lead to interpretation. Do they have to get the dog registered? You're supposed to automatically register a vicious dog, and you got to get insurance on the dog. But in order to track them and make sure they do everything they need to do, we got to have that dog registered, because we don't have the time picking up, admitting dogs we pick up, we don't have the time to keep checking on that, make sure they got the dog in the county.
Are there certain breeds that are problematic?
I don't know, all dogs, yeah. It's the owner. Yeah, really, we don't have no problem with us for six breed. People don't been bit by.
So in a manner?
Majority of them dogs are German Shepherd labs. You, we hardly ever get pit bull. Now, that baby with the jaw, that was a pit bull, but now that dog was tied, and the daddy took this baby down there and put him in front of the dog to play with the dog when the dog grabbed him. So you really can't put that on the dog.
So they should have went to jail for a long time.
That's another thing, like, it's no, no consequence for nothing if they, I mean, it's just whatever happened, happened, if they got insurance to get paid, if they don't, you try to go to court to sue them to get the money to pay it, if you don't have homeowners, and the majority of people ain't gonna have homeowners this year, because a lot of folk rent, they got all these dogs that's unruly.
There's such a thing as renters insurance.
Yeah, but they won't have it.
Landowner insurance.
It just, it just need to be a way, I told Jacob, if we need to be a way where something like that happen, we can deem the dog name, we can euthanize it. See, we did that with that German Shepherd, and we ended up getting in trouble because they said we didn't do the rabies test before we euthanized it, but the dog had had a shot, previously had a shot. Now, his old shot wasn't up to date, but normally from what the vet tell you, if the dog has ever had a rabies shot in his life, he covered. He won't, he won't contract rabies, it's just, the secondary shots are just boosters. But they didn't have to bite the bullet on that because we euthanized the dog, it bit the child, and then the mom and daddy held the child that got bit, said, well, the doctor said y'all should have tested the dog to see if he needed to give him the shots. And what we try to explain is if you want your child to get rabies shot, you need to get him that night. If you try to wait the quarantine period, ten, twelve days, and then we tell you the dog didn't have rabies, and then he started getting shot too late, he already infected. But they, you know, everybody want to wait, they want you to hold the dog and see if the dog start acting up, and then if he don't, then they, they won't get the shots. If we think the dog is infected, they'll get the shot, but by then you already done waited twelve days in order, you know, you got stuff in your system. And we haven't had any cases of rabies in dog that bit people here since I've been here, twenty thirteen. And we have had dogs that had rabies, but they were involved in fights with raccoons and stuff like that, and we'd send them off, and they end up having rabies. But for the ones that had bit people, we hadn't had it.
Do we have a dog fighting problem?
I haven't had any calls about dog fighting. Now, we had people who suspected dogs fighting, and we don't been out and looked, and it were more on the end of chickens than dogs here. I had never had any.
Well, we'll get the chickens. We'll get the chickens. This is, this is an animal ordinance, this isn't a dog and cat ordinance.
Oh, it definitely need to be animal. I had to go see about horse today. So, yeah, we definitely needed to include all animals, especially pot-bellied pigs.
But the biggest problem, the biggest problem you have is with dogs in the county.
Dogs. That way, dogs and cats, but cats are easier, like we pick up way more cats, even though, like on that paper, we have more calls for a cat, but the cats that you're able to catch. You can't catch a cat like catch a dog. You can trick a dog, you can't trick a cat, because a cat fight with all, all four feet, and you know, you got to have a trap. You can't trap them, you can't catch them, and they just feral, you know, they're full of feral cats. Yeah, cats are a bigger problem than dogs, but it's just catching the cat and getting rid of it.
Right.
And we don't need no catch and release, none of that. We got too many to where if you release them, they still going to be doing the same thing. You can spay the cat, neuter the cat and release it, and it's still going to be on people's calls, digging people flowers up, pooping in the yard, under the carport, so.
Slapping in the flyer bag.
Yeah, so they, the catch and release, we need to get, get your one cat that you want, get it registered or tagged or whatever, and keep it in house, and don't let them reproduce.
What'd you say about pot-bellied pigs?
We got, we got way too many pot-bellied pigs, but they, they're supposed to be considered livestock with the sheriff department having them, but since people calling them pets, the sheriff department can't do nothing about it.
Why do you say we have too many?
The people who get them, they let them reproduce. Like up in Cheryl Jean Estates, I don't know if you know what that is, on Tracy Drive?
Yeah, I know.
In one house, he got fourteen of them, and he got eight dogs in that subdivision.
Cheryl Jean?
So you can imagine, we get caught, we had nine-one-one called this weekend about that dog chasing the neighbors.
So you think there might be, need to be restrictions on the number of animals?
If you live in a subdivision, you don't need any livestock, I don't think. No goat, no pot-bellied pigs, no chickens, because I mean, you only, anywhere like that, like Cheryl Jean, Logan Landing, the one, well, that, that is not an hour, they call us about Salt Mill, whatever it is all the time, but that's in the city, but.
Yeah.
Any of those.
Back down East Lee Street.
Yeah, you don't, you shouldn't be able to have.
They got animals out there?
Oh, yeah, they got to be able. Everybody want a goat, one of these goats or these pot-bellied pigs, and then they have babies, and they got ten more pot-bellied pigs, because them up there at Cheryl Jean, they run around, I mean, they all over the place. Everybody up there, they'll call, they'll eat one.
What about peacocks?
No, the peacock, they, they, we don't have to worry about them. They ain't got no ordinance. They could die. One of them made it up here to the road department.
What about backyard chickens? You have problems with that?
Everybody got it, plenty of chickens. And they even a problem on property like out on Wayneville Road. Anyway, when you got a neighbor up close to you, if you can see your neighbor's house like from here to that building across the street, of course, your free-roaming chicken's going to be over here, and everybody complaining about it. All the trailer park got chickens that people complain about. Lincoln Park got chickens.
What's that?
Lincoln Park.
Okay.
They got a hundred something that people complain about. Ain't no big deal until they start getting on people's calls. That's the main issue everywhere. Down Wayneville Road, they get on top of people's calls. So I don't know if you need to put a limit on chickens or, or what, but everybody who got them, they got them, and they don't do that, but they just, chickens, they just hang around.
Just let them run.
Yeah, right.
Free range.
Salvo, Salvo Street got them. They got turkeys on, on Salvo Street that somebody brought.
Domesticated turkeys?
Well, they were domesticated, somebody brought, they brought four of them to keep, and then they, they started back doing their thing, and now they just aggravated everybody up around.
They chasing people.
March automotive and all that back then.
They free range, yeah.
What about goats?
Goats, we don't have a mini problem with goats except out on, the only cause of getting on goats now out on Wayne Road, but they cause a lot of problem in track. Boyd Road and Triscent.
Gettin' out?
Yeah, they, they stay in the road, because everybody who gets them, they free-roam. They don't, the only one that would cage nothing up, everything is free-roam. Yeah, we had, I would have a couple out of accidents on.
The free range of livestock, because I used to think goats is livestock.
Yeah, but people calling them pets.
I thought it ended in the eighties, you know? It used to be free range, I mean, you cows could, you know, just go wherever they wanted to go and.
It's too congested.
But all that ended in the eighties, I thought.
We finally got rid of all the pigs on Triscent, because there were a couple of car accidents, and that killed, that killed a couple of them, and we picked up a couple of them, but it don't take nothing if somebody go over here, Marvin, to the auction and give them back.
Those weren't pot-bellied pigs, those were just regular white pigs, right?
Oh, no, they, they were, they had turned into little razorbacks, because they've been out there in the woods.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they done gone.
Yeah, you can't control them, Alan, you can't roster no pigs.
Turned into wild boars, wild hogs.
There's a reversion clause in a pig. You give him one day a dark, and he's wild.
Yeah, it happened quick.
Yeah.
Everybody came down with, get them and bring them back to their house.
Yeah, they start growing hair and turn dark, and next thing you know, they're.
But if you can get everything in line at the top with the, what you're allowed to have at the top, all the other stuff, it'll fix itself.
Okay.
Because right now, it's unlimited dogs in the county. You don't have no limit, like in the city, you can get three, so there's people with, I mean, they're like, the people in Cheryl Jean, they got fourteen pigs, they got eight dogs, and they just, they tear up, everybody trash. If you ride down Cheryl Jean, you're like, okay, everything's up.
So what do you think the limit on dogs ought to be?
No more than five, and that's if you, I mean, got room for five. It's like you have a certain amount of acreage for livestock, if you got room for five. You can't just power fire dogs up in your backyard, chain to the trees in all different directions. Like if you have something good enough, like the tethering, that you need a thirty-foot minimum and a fifteen-foot run, that's real good, because that'll limit you on that, this all the space you got.
I don't like tethering animals. I mean, fencing them is one thing, tethering is something else.
You have draft two or the first?
Yeah, two, yeah, the two.
Yeah, tie a.
I have a question.
Tractor tire on to them or something, it's ridiculous.
How many kennels do you have?
Well, we only have sixteen that for dog pickup and nine that for cat pickup, but in that sixteen, and we got, and we got another four for dogs that bite, so anytime you get a bite dog, got to be held for those ten, twelve, they, they go in the four room. So you can't use those for regular population, but out of those sixteen, we're not, we're not only supposed to use a twelve, because you got to leave four empty just in case some dog come in and sit, and we didn't know, see, because now depending that that dog was in has to stay empty for three days.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase the question. In, in Upson County, how many kennels do you have on record that operate for profit?
Oh.
Commercial kennel?
Yeah, none that I know of. All they go through the Department of Ag. They don't have to let us know, they just have to let the state know.
We know this, we know.
We know, at least one, because we approved it.
Because we approved one.
Y'all did, it went out on Chris.
We approved.
Andrew's Chapel Road.
Andrew's Chapel Road.
Oh, and that's a dog kennel for sale?
Or the board, and then, I don't know if they.
Well, they're for board.
They're board dogs.
So do they have to get a license?
Yeah, they don't have to report that to, they just have to report that to the state.
Well, and plus, they would have to pay occupation tax through my office, and I believe we only have two that pay occupation tax. And, and they're, in those type situations, they're going to control the rounds and such kinds of something. That, that's not, the situation would be a nuisance situation.
Yeah, that is a show.
Other barking to the neighbors, that wouldn't be, that, that would only be a nuisance there, because they pretty much going to take care of those. If they pay, if somebody's paying them the board of dollars, stuff like that, they're taking care, they're going to take care of this, because that's their income. Can I make, I would just like to throw this out, Adrian, in consideration of what, that's your, every day, every day you're dealing with this, if you presented us something in writing, like what you would suggest, or is the vicious and the different types of dogs, what you would look at for, is it dogs, cats, chickens? You know, if you put us something that you see every day, and this could help your job better, then we take that and apply that to, to this ordinance would be a good direction you see every day, and this could help your job better, then we take that and apply that to, to this ordinance would be a good direction for us to go. Instead of us as, you know, just, you know.
Cause we don't know what you got there.
And some of this stuff. Farmers and plumers, see, and whatever.
The thing with the chickens, it not in there, it wasn't even in there initially, anything about chickens. So I guess that's why we couldn't really enforce anything with chickens. So we just need a chicken ordinance. Well, chicken and pig and goat, exotic, well, they got exotic in, but, cause people getting more and more stuff. Somebody out on Old Alder Road got some hunters.
Well, what I would suggest is that.
And they got permits from when they got them.
Really?
When they got some.
Mr. Doug, would you, you said we have two licensed issued kennel licenses. Tell, give me the name of those, please.
I just don't remember the other one. The, the one you know about is on Wind Sweet, cause that's the one we just approved.
Yeah, we did that one.
And just corrected.
It ain't North Delray.
I'm not sure where the other one is.
That, that one at North Delray is, that's a concern.
It is. I know they got a hundred dogs, but I mean, when we went, we, we been before, a couple of years back, and they had.
Man, they got dogs like you wouldn't know.
Oh, I know they got over a hundred, but they had over a hundred.
They probably got over two hundred.
They had over a hundred dogs, we tagged, they had all the paperwork. We went through the whole file cabinet, matched up with every dog. Yeah, they got dogs for, for years. They got, they got way bigger operation than what we got. They operating way bigger than what, they way bigger than our building.
I just think, I just think that would help us to, to, to ex- express this thing to, to an end. If you, you know, okay, you prioritize, you know, the biggest problems and the biggest issues, and let's work, let's work those into this ordinance. And not that we could do everything you ask, like you ask, we, we could look at it and apply to what.
Piece it together.
Yeah, what would fit into legal standards or that we could, we could actually require. But it would help us take this and fine tune it, uh, on out.
Yeah, before it get out of control, because before it get out of control, like, right now, everything is, people are so caught up on when we show up, that they, how we trip ass. So that's why we get guns pulled on us and we get ran out the yard, and, you know, we not gonna hang around and get shot. So you can only enforce so much with your word, kind words.
It's, it's not gonna change with, even if we put this in place, you still.
We still have to do something for, like, we went to the Cheryl Jean, a nine one one call yesterday at Tucson about the dogs and the pigs. And the deputy went with us, and the lady told the deputy, you either gonna lock me up or you gonna write me a ticket, you can't take my dog. And I was like, we couldn't really take the dog anyway, cause they had got the dog back and put him in the car. But we were trying to explain to her that you gotta figure out, keep your dog at your house. And she told us, you take the dog Spalding County to her son's house, and we got the same call this morning for the same dog. So all they did was, the deputies said, I didn't see you leave, they ran up the road for a little while, went to the deputy and they left, and they brought the dog right back. Cause another lady went to her mailbox, got chased by the same dog this morning, so. I had told, now, now, Norman went to this house with me and seen the same people, all the neighbors in the neighborhood saw him out there, they came out there fussing at him about the same dog, same pig. And he told me that they could do nuisance abatement, something on the house, to where, uh, they get sent a summons from the magistrate without us having to have their driver's license. Cause after we come up there, you, we still gotta get you to hand us your driver's license. And I gotta take your driver's license back to the truck, try to write you all these tickets, and I gotta still try to watch you, and I gotta watch your dog while I'm doing this, and bring your driver's license back, and hope you sign the ticket and take the ticket. So he told me that they could do a nuisance abatement on these properties that we having all these problem with. Cause, well, we wouldn't have to be staying out there and being in all this conflict with the same people over and over, you know, just. Cause in other counties, they just turn their utilities off and take you pay your ticket. But, you know, he told me, we don't, we not. The utilities and stuff here not connected with the county, you gotta go do EMC, the waste permit or whatever, so we can't really do that, but. It gotta be something in there we can do to affect their livelihood to where they gonna either straighten up or come pay whatever they need to pay to get their stuff back in order. Cause that's what right now, they tell us to do when we get there. All we can hope is we catch the dog when they not at home.
Okay, back to my original question. How many kennels do we have? How many, how many dog operating, sales, buy, trade, are you aware of?
I know about the one you talking about, North Delray, and it's another rescue that, I haven't been to it yet, but they sent us an email saying it was a rescue opening up a kennel out on Chris, somewhere out on Chris Highway, fifteen acres they bought. And they store a dog, they keep a dog for a rescue out there. But we hadn't had no calls about it, about for a noise, a dog.
It, it appears to me that these, if these folks are making money selling dogs, doing whatever they do with dogs, then they need to have a license.
Now, they supposed to have a state license if they doing it.
Well, not only state license, but county.
Basically, the occupation tax.
Oh, yeah.
That's what he said, there's two, there's two that we, that they pay, they pay occupation tax, that's all. So if we have three, four, or five more, my office is unaware of.
That's what I'm saying, if there's ten in operation and we're collecting on two, we're not doing good business.
Yeah, I don't know that it necessarily has to be some kind of animal license, it could be a business license.
That's what it is, that's what it is, that's what he's talking about, business license for that. But for us to give, for us to fine tune this, and I think it would do us well if you could give us something in writing that you, you know.
And it could just be bullet points.
Yeah, yeah.
On each, on each problem that you experience.
Yeah, your problems, and then let us.
Well, I'm gonna suggest at some point, we have a work session and, and, you know, invite Mr. Rutherford to come to the work session and so we can hammer out maybe the finer details of some, uh, again. He's expressing problems I would have never thought of in a million years. So, uh, he's the one that's dealing with it day to day. How many employees do you have?
We got three other guys, three other officers now in a sector, which is, we went, we were, we were running with two for the long. But like I say, we think, we, you know, it don't, we don't get a day where we don't get animal. We get something every day, and you wouldn't. Most people wouldn't expect that for a county this size, that somebody will have a dog, a cat, a three, a ten to turn in every day. Every day that we open, and then we still get called out on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Like, we had two, we had nine one one call both days this weekend. And last weekend, we had three, just on Saturday. Because people outside again, and dogs is outside with them.
Let me ask you this. Uh, I think my memory may serve me right. Last time you were here, you were talking about that we have a problem with outsiders bringing dogs to Upson County. Do we still have that problem?
It's still going on, because even though they opened up the shelter in Pike, they not taking animals in. And then Spalding County, they stopped taking animals in, because they went to being, uh, no kill, they trying to do the no, well, they changed, they changed it back now. Cause they just got started over, but their last year, they been no kill. Like, last year, we took in that, uh, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars. The lady from the state came and said, Spalding ain't taking in but seventy-four dogs for the whole year. So that's how they, so all the dogs that they would give before, the people had to find somewhere to bring them. So they either take them to the line and let them out, or they get somebody they doing up some county with a driver's license deal to bring them there. But either way, they gonna get rid of them. And then, on the other hand, with Spalding, like Spalding, they charge you a hundred dollars to turn in a dog. They don't get no revenue for none of that picking up, dropping off, none of that, we don't get nothing. Everything's zero. Spalding, if they gotta come pick it up, it's a hundred twenty-five dollars. If you bring it to them, it's a hundred. If they set you a trap, it's twenty-five dollars. We do, everything we do is just tax, you know, going out, no coming in.
So if you pick up a dog, when they come to claim the dog, you carry?
They pay, you pay if you come pick your dog up, but you're not required to get it. That's why I'm trying to tell Norman before. If we had to pick up your dog, it ought to be something, but in the system under your address or where, you give, you give, uh, invoice.
What, what's the fee now?
It's twenty-five dollars if you pick it up.
First time?
Yeah, when we pick it up. If you pick it up, we pick it up, it's twenty-five dollars, then ten dollars a day. And most folk don't pick them up the day we pick them up. It gonna be, I ain't got two, three weeks, if pop, if they have been used, nah. But we try, you know, you try not to keep them that long, cause they're more than it, they ain't gonna want it. Like, people don't even wanna pay that twenty-five to get them back. So when they get up to eighty-five, ninety-five, they, they definitely not gonna pay. You tell them, they like, well, I'll let you know something. And I told them, not holding no dog off, let me know something. I give you many days, if you hadn't showed up, you gone. You gotta go. Cause we still picking up, and like, we only got sixteen cages that we use for, pick, got for dogs in that building. And the, the building is plenty big enough for us, uh, uh, county this side to, to own what you should get, but, you know, we just get we getting one of those animals because of, you know, we allow, we allowing them to have as many as they want, so. Somebody got two dogs from Walmart parking lot Thursday, that somebody was giving away, and they turned them in to us Friday. They were like, it ain't gonna work out, cause they pooped in the living room. But why would you take two, take, take one? Don't take them at all, but they got two from there, and then they just brought them straight to us.
And if you, and if you tell them, you, you want a hundred dollars, in our environment, if we tell you, oh, it's a hundred dollars to take this dog. They just gonna get in the car, and they gonna go down the road, nobody gonna put the dog, put the dog out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they gonna put the dog out. Uh, so that's not, that's not a fix.
Yeah.
We can call it a fix, but it's not a fix. Everyone goes, put the dog out.
Yeah, we would never get a hundred dollars for a dog like they do, cause they've been going on so long. But they also got different ordinance in play for is, uh, the dog being registered, uh, they, so. They already know who dog is. If the dog registered on my chip, then they end up at children, they scanning, and they got your name on it, they can still send you a fine. Because of, they, they got.
This is in Spalding County?
Uh-huh. They got that part already figured out. So the dog is tagged versus here.
How is that paid for?
Again, they do it through the, uh, when they, when they initially pick up the dog.
What, I don't understand what you're saying. Pick it up from the pound?
Uh, when you, when you pick up a dog and it had to go through their system.
It's microchip then.
So you buy a dog from PetSmart?
Yeah. Now, they, any place you buy a dog for like that, they recommend that you give them chip. And a lot of people will have chips in it.
Talking apples and oranges, though, you're, you're talking registration, like, you're registering the animal with the county.
Yeah, just like a car tag, but I know that was, it wouldn't ever happen until they have to come through the system bill. People wouldn't voluntarily go and register their dog.
Well.
I know they wouldn't do it. It wouldn't happen until they go.
You know, and, and an idea like that might land like a a rotten egg in a punch bowl. But it wasn't too long ago that everybody had to get a little blue sign and put it out in front of their mailbox. And that didn't settle with everybody is. You know, a lot of folks thought that was kind of ridiculous or unnecessary, or, you know, I can't, the fire department find my house, it's the one on fire.
It's more than smoking that.
Yeah.
The pizza man need to know where it's at.
You know, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, uh, if you have a, have a problem, as you're describing. Where you can't hold people responsible for animals that they own. There has to be solutions to that, and I'm just kind of spitballing what those solutions might be. I'm certainly not suggesting animal registration, at least not yet. But, I mean, that's one possibility. Can you think of anything else?
See, every dog's supposed to, it would, it's supposed to be easy, because every dog in Georgia's supposed to have a rabies vaccine, it would have tagged anyway.
Yeah, of course.
So that would tag it to somebody, but the majority of dogs, they get rabies vaccines here. They get them because they come through the shelter, and then when you pick your dog up, they gotta get a rabies. They gotta get it when they leave.
Well, there's a lot of caring pet owners that take their animals to one of the veterinarians in the county and get their rabies shot.
Yeah, but those are the ones that, those are the good dog. We don't have no problem with them dogs.
We're not, we're not gonna get anywhere like this. We just got, we're, we're gonna have to, uh.
Well, what I, what I would like to do is sit down, uh, and maybe broach this subject. Can you put this on the agenda again for next month?
Absolutely.
And give the commissioner's time to read the document as it is. Uh, take into consideration what Mr. Rutherford has told us, but I think we're gonna have to have a work session. And, uh, either he's gonna provide us some kind of documentation. I, I would prefer he be there. So that we can bounce ideas off of him, cause he's the one actually doing the work.
I think that, I think that nuisance abatement thing would make a whole lot of difference, because you gotta have something to.
Well, there's gotta be teeth. There's gotta be consequences. If you have a animal that's chasing people down the road, or biting, or, uh, it don't matter what kind of animal it is, a goose. You know, a chicken.
We had a horse fight last year. Two horses fight, biting each other, and they were high dogging.
That's what I recommend. We have any other comments, Joel, you got?
Well, I'm, I'm back on this kennel thing. You know, you're in the woods every day. How many kennels do we have operating in Thompson, Upson County?
I told you, that's the one, the one you said, uh, North Delray, that's the one I haven't been to.
And that's, there's only two, and that's one of them.
Yeah, you say, y'all said the other one too. But see, we don't get.
We did one on the, we did one just recently.
Wind Sweet Run.
We don't get complaints about them kennels. That, that's the only place we go where we get complaints. And that, that's everywhere else, I guess. We got the trailer parks and subdivision, they don't have to go to the kennel.
Dog business is big business in Upson County. And, and we're talking about people who are selling dogs out of the country, or bringing dogs into Upson County.
So you're talking about breeding kennels.
Yes.
But that's, that's, that's not, that's not even considerate in, in, in a part of this, if they're registered, if they're registered breeding kennels, or if they're not registered, they should be.
That's, that's my point.
But what I'm saying, that's not part of this, this, this animal ordinance situation.
Well, it can be, I know.
That's a business, that's a business license, and that's a business situation.
Well, it can be, if you're riding in there.
We don't know who they are, then, then they're never gonna get a dad gun license.
But then that go, then that goes back to our, our zoning and our business license department, that's not animal control.
Yeah, that won't have.
That's not animal.
I understand, I appreciate that, but if I ask a question, how many kennels we got, this is the man that I'm gonna ask.
And I'm, I, yeah, I'm gonna be frank, I, I think you should know, if we've got breeding kennels. Uh, how many people do we have that are keeping gang cocks?
Oh, I have no idea. I, I don't know how you determine if they gang cock. They tell you they, they chickens. I mean, it's.
I was TBI agent for twenty-two years.
We got plenty of area where they tied to the little rope with all the barrels and the butches.
Yeah, that would.
They everywhere in Upson County.
That, that, right, and, and I would, I would look at that as if not evidence, certainly suspicion. Maybe somebody's keeping game cocks, and if they're keeping game cocks, then maybe they're fighting game cocks.
Yeah, we know they do a lot of shake stuff, you gotta be able to catch them in the air.
Yeah, and I understand, but, uh, well, with three people, I mean, it's kind of like Doug and the, the other ordinances. I mean, if you only have two people that are out there doing enforcement, it, it gets kind of difficult.
You see a lot, but you don't cover a lot. You don't get to cover a lot of ground.
Well, we're trying to make your job easier. I would have wrote an ordinance where your job is, you can take it, it's got some teeth in it, it's got some stuff that you can do, there's con, you know, the fair consequences.
Yeah, it needs to be fair.
Yeah, it needs to be fair.
But everybody, everybody, ain't nobody polite no more. You're trying to enforce decency. People ain't decent. They don't think they have to be.
Some of these breeding, and I, and I, I will second, what I think Joel was trying to say. The breeding kennel is an entirely different problem.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And some of those are just bad, bad, bad. It's all about getting puppies, and the mama dogs are just abused to no end. They're just, they're just a means to an end.
That's the, puppy mill.
A puppy mill, yeah, and I don't know. A puppy mill, yeah. And I don't know that we have, though, that, that situation in the county. Uh, Joel seems to, well, you can.
He, he ended up being one to the way.
And we can, we can, we can certainly write some, some, uh, some ordinance. All right, anything else?
I don't have anything.
You have anything, Johnny?
No.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. If, if you've had time to read this, do you have any comments on the actual words that we put together now, or?
I did, like I said, you did good with that, uh, that tethering thing, but like you said, then you gotta put a limit on how many dogs. And then whatever, I see you had about subdivision can put, add on to whatever you prefer, they can have additional stricter ordinances for subdivision.
Well, right, if we say, the county says you can have five dogs, but Cheryl Jean says, no, home association can, can be stiffer than that.
Stiffer.
Yeah, if they wanna be, that came up in the meeting that was discussed.
I think we use special language for trailer parks as well.
That they can be stricted?
That we can be, well, I don't know how, how it's.
Well, our ordinances are our ordinances, so.
Uh, trailer parks don't have a homeowner association, do they?
Well, they use an owner.
Well, they potentially.
He don't, he, he pick up the dogs, he himself is bringing them. He don't allow none of that, but all the, a lot of the other landlords that own the trailer park. And we can't get no cooperation with them. They'll tell us that they said that people can't have dogs, but everybody out there got dogs, yeah.
Well, what we can do is, and I think I tried to do that in the re-draft two here, but, you know, let's make the property owner also liable, as possible. And so all of a sudden, if that's the trailer park owner, that means that owner is responsible for any animal in any home.
Put something in the lease saying you can't have your dog chained up, because you can't have a hundred p a bull chained up in no trailer park. And expect it to function with all these kids and people in and out, like on aviation.
Big fan of chaining dogs up here.
Aviation and, uh, they had big problem with dogs on, uh, McDonald's trailer park.
If you need to pin a dog up, you need to fence it.
Rose Hill, yeah. Yeah, Rose Hill, it, it, you can't have a lot of dogs in areas.
Well, in the rewrite of this ordinance, actually now, and this was, I get, got to hear three and a half years ago, just this weekend, so it's fresh with my memory, but y'all, three and a half years ago, did not want any single point tie downs.
Yeah, single point, yeah.
So every, every dog now is gonna have to be on a run, and that's in this ordinance now.
Yeah, and on fifteen foot run with thirty foot span.
Right.
Or a kennel.
So now, does that help the neighbors much? Uh, I don't know about that, but.
But you gotta have a room for it.
Right.
Because we have plenty of people that chain their dogs to their neighbor's fence, and you, now you gotta, they fussing about who own the fence. You know, you'll chain their fences, but look, my property, you hook your dog on this side, but I put the fence up. The person that live on this side, I, I put the fence up. I don't want your dog snatching the fence. Well, it's on my side, you know.
You're always gonna have those arguments.
Y'all ain't gonna have.
Well, that's not a run, though. If you chain your, that's a fixed point, and, and we're, we're gonna prohibit that.
You're gonna have to have the dog with enough room for that, what you talking about, that thirty foot minimum. And they'll be glad. Their dog, dog will be real happy to have it. The owner won't be, but the dog will be.
Well. Well, and I guess that would help in that if there's a smaller lot problem where if you can't meet that minimum run on your property, then you just can't have a dog.
Yeah, you can't have a dog.
Maybe a smaller dog.
Keep the batteries chained.
You can have a big dog, you can have a little, bite a little tiny dog. Or maybe a rabbit.
Yeah, well, since I did that last time, we, but we had that house with them twenty-seven dogs in it. Since y'all, then we had that, I don't have water road, and that was terrible.
What about birds? You have any problems with birds?
We had like one or two people with a house full of birds. Wind Sweet, Wind Sweet had a bird with the poop on the floor coming up to the end of the, the glass on the window sliding door. They had a, a whole lot of birds in the house.
Well, we, we can't, uh, police people's hygiene and habits.
Yeah, we try to stay outside, but.
But somebody called about that?
Oh, yeah, somebody always gonna call. Everybody getting packages. Somebody gonna see it, between FedEx, Amazon, man.
Well, they're worried about the bird's health and welfare.
They, they worry, they worry about their children.
So you're gonna carry this?
What's that?
So you wanna carry this over?
I wanna carry it over to, to next month, put it back on the agenda, and, uh, discuss. Next time, everybody will have had an opportunity to read the document as it is, study it, and then we can discuss whether or not we need to have a work session, or got the bid, we use the, the, the regular session to try to hammer out something. I think we need a work.
I, I think we're gonna have to have a.
Work, work session.
You're not gonna do this regularly?
No, no.
Yeah. And I, and I think we need to move on as quickly as we possibly can. Joel brings up a good point. We got, we got, and Adrian does too, we got problems that need to be addressed.
Yeah, you came here for decency. I be telling them that when I show up. I'm just trying to get you to be decent with your neighbors.
Yeah, we all have to live together.
Yeah, you would think it'd be common sense, isn't it?
All right, moving on, other business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here right away. I need to get everybody in. I need to be able to get them at home.
Other business. Is there any other business, Doug?
Not under number five, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, planning commissioners, issues and announcements.
I don't have any.
Well, thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Appreciate you informing us, Joel.
No, sir.
Okay. What about you, Mr. Secretary? You have any announcements?
Uh, just one, if you happen to stop by the office, um, we have a new clerk. Guadalupe Aragón has been with us. I think this is beginning of her fourth or fifth week.
Well, I met her.
And, um.
She seemed real nice.
She, uh, interviewed very well, and, you know, there's way too much to learn, so it's gonna take her a while, but, uh, she's, she's taking it a bite at a time, and, like I said, anytime, she's a very bright and upbeat person. So, uh, if you wanna stop by and say hello, we certainly welcome you. And at some point, we'll probably give her another five or six months. You, as you know, the county manager likes to stress cross-training, and so one of the people who doesn't get much cross-training is my position. You see me all the time, and if I was sick or ill or something, unless I could show up on the phone like I did a few months ago, somebody needs to be to step in, at least help you out, at least a little bit on, on a meeting, or at least take care of the minutes and taping it, so. She'll probably in four, five, six months show up and just help me out at that one meeting and cross-train. But meanwhile, don't have to be strangers in our office and stop by. Other than that, that's it from the secretary, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will enter that a motion for adjourn, adjournment. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Mr. Doug, I will say to you that I am, I think that your office and building zoning and those, I think you're doing a fantastic job.